Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council Meeting for Monday, September 13, 2021. Call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all councilors are present, including the city administrator. At this time, I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible). 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 (Inaudible).
Thank you. Moving on to Item 4, under General, we have Item A. You know, it's not every day that you get to enjoy the company and celebrate and congratulate somebody who's given back so much to this community, and so many years to this community. So, at this time, we are here to recognize Chief Duros for Fire Chief of the Year, and Brian's going to speak a little bit about it, but we cannot thank you enough for your dedication, your commitment, and all your hard work for the city of Saco. Brian?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like you all know, I had the opportunity to travel to the main Fire Chiefs Conference recently to accept on behalf of the city an award recognizing Chief Duros as Fire Chief of the Year. Chief Duros also got a plaque. His was a little bigger and a little fancier than this one. It was quite impressive. But we did receive this here at the city, and, you know, well-deserved, well-earned, obviously a 40-year career here with the city, and is a testament to his leadership and his service here, and to the fire service more broadly, you know, around the state. Chief Duros is known as someone who is knowledgeable and who has been clearly, clearly established of having a distinguished career. So, we thank you, Chief, for your service, all your years here in Saco. We're lucky to have you. This is well-deserved, and thank you to all the department that showed up tonight and are recognizing your leadership as well. So, thank you to all, a great honor, not only for the chief, but to the city, the city as well. So, thanks to all. Appreciate it.
With that, we move on to Item 5, Committee Correspondence to Council. Any committee correspondents this evening? Councilor Berman?
I'm sure the council has seen the memo from Economic Development Specialist Burna regarding the Conservation Commission's recommendations. I just wanted to note, on 509 Buxton Road, I just wanted to note that the Conservation Commission, though they ultimately are recommending against conserving this property, the process of evaluating this property led to robust discussion, and they feel it was a really good use of their time, and they hope to continue to serve the city in this way going forward in the future. This property wasn't the one, but we hope we can engage them to evaluate future properties going forward.
Thank you. Any further committee correspondents to council? Moving on to Item 6, which is Public Comment. We have a couple of folks who've signed in for Public Comment. Up first is Lynn Copeland. And again, for those who's coming to the micro, please speak into the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lynn Copeland. I live at 526 Ferry Road. Thank you for having this discussion tonight. My comments are about the proposed sidewalk down between Bayview and Seaside on Ferry Road, and we are one community. So, I know that some of us on Facebook have said, and some others have said, that, you know, "Well, you know, we can't do that if we do the," you know, "We've got to do it for everybody." But I want you to know that we are one Saco. We have sidewalks going in downtown. We have sidewalks going out to Scarborough. We have a 112 traffic project going on. We have a lot of things going on at the same time, and there's nothing to say that having 1.8 of a mile sidewalk is going to take away from anybody else's anything. So, just please keep that in mind. So, what this project is really about is safety. There's the white fog line goes right up to the grass, and there's nowhere to walk, and people with mobility issues, it's impossible. But we've had, you've heard me passionately talk about the dog on the leash. I don't think I need to tell that story again. It was horrifying. But that's, and one of the problems with that, I will say, I learned from police chief, is that people don't call and say anything. So, I would just want to put a plug in. If you see something, say something, so there aren't recorded incidents on the record. And there's, you know, there's puppies and dogs and strollers. It's a widely-used area for recreating and, you know, bike rides go right through there all the time. There's a lot going on. The original bike path that goes down Ferry Road, it was designed originally, or intended originally, to go all the way down to Camp Ellis, but the Plymouth settlement went in. So, it was diverted because they had to put in sidewalks, and it was, you know, an economical thing that they decided to do that. But the houses still, you know, that was what, in the 80s or 90s? The houses still don't have sidewalks down there, and personally, I'm not a huge fan of sidewalks, but it's such a safety issue that I think that it's really important to consider. And I'm sure you're going to hear from some of my other neighbors, and I know that the funding for that original bike path wasn't just taxpayers. There were the Rotary Club and others. So, nobody's to say that this has to be all, you know, on the taxpayers at this point. But that's the first story down the road. This is the first reading or the first hearing, and I just want to keep this thing alive because it really does matter to a lot of people. I understand you've got a lot of emails, and I'm glad that the community engaged in That's about it for me.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
Up next on the sign-up sheet is Greg Copeland.
I'm Greg Copeland, and I also live at 526 Ferry Road. Lynn is my wife. I go to the end of my driveway, and I walk to the right, and I go .4 miles before I hit a sidewalk. I go left at the end of my driveway, and .48 miles, I hit a sidewalk. So, if I want to walk my dog a mile, I have to walk at least .8 in the road, not on the sidewalk. There are goat paths along the road, but I can't walk in goat paths. I've had a knee replacement. I've had meniscus surgery. I have to walk in the road. So, I walk with my left foot on the white line so that I can walk down and then walk a tenth of a mile and turn around and come back, and then walk the other side of the street. In my times when I'm walking, I've played chicken with cars. Cars have literally bared down on me. I've stared people in the eyes as they aimed at me and luckily turned away. I had a truck stop once, and big truck towing a, what do you call it, a boat. He stopped in the road, right in front of me, and yelled out at me to get out of the road. I stood my ground, and he pulled out and went around me. These are safety issues. These are the issues that I actually face when I want to walk my dog. I know that there are other streets out in Wards 1 and 2 that have equally as narrow. My wife and I just rode our bicycles yesterday. We went out Boom Road. We went Loudon Road. We went Heath Road, Hearn Road. We went all those. We got passed by more cars just going from our house to Saco Bay Variety than we got passed on all those entire other roads. Our street, I'm not going to say it's heavy traffic. It's a heavy traffic for where it is, but it's not the same as the out. We have a lot of vacation people. We have a lot of people that utilize the beach area, and it's a safety issue for them. It's, I watch. I see people dive off the road, run off the road when cars are coming. I'm just here speaking in favor of a study. We can talk about the particulars of the sidewalks later, but I think we need a study, and I'd ask you all to at least vote to fund the study. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Lucy Hatch.
My name is Lucy Hatch from 19 Evergreen Drive, and I was glad to see the fire department. They've been on our street three times in the last couple of weeks, and I hope they didn't go there now. But, Mr. Mayor, councilors, and city administrator, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, and let me begin by thanking you for your serving in your capacity in the city of Saco. Most, or maybe just some of us, are aware that your positions come with the promise of long hours of reading and researching for the council meetings. There are numerous emails and calls to return, and we all know that most, if not all, correspondence is complaints. I imagine you don't receive many written thank-yous, so thank you. With gratitude in mind, I am coming to you for help with an issue at hand. We have all heard that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. This brings me to my issue with Saco. Why is there no mask mandate in our municipal buildings and stores when the CDC and governor highly recommend them? We know some will complain about wearing masks, but so what? If the hospitals, schools, box stores can mandate masking indoors, why can't we? Our little grandchildren wear them all day and never complain. Why can't adults do the same? The cities of Bitterford, Kennebunk, and Old Orchard have mask mandates in place, and their websites are all up to date with their COVID recommendations. There is a state ordinance that mandates each municipality to have a local public health officer. I went through the Saco website and find that person to be Dick Lambert. Maybe that's why I'm unable to find any information regarding COVID on our website. So, who should I speak to about protecting the young kids and our elderly parents? The news are full of exhausted hospital workers working endlessly to save unvaccinated COVID patients from their own unwillingness to do the right thing. They're not willing to get vaccinated with an FDA-approved vaccine, but eager to accept conventional and unconventional treatments. How can you say you don't trust the FDA by putting unknowns into your body, but you're willing to get treated with an antiparasitic drug that is made for livestock? These unvaccinated patients are taking up all the beds, leaving none for the non-COVID-related emergencies, and all we can do at this point is take care of ourselves and wear masks. Compliant people are now at risk, and because many won't wear masks and get vaccinated, you can't make someone get a shot to save himself or others, but you can compel him to wear a mask indoors. So, please mandate indoor masking. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is William Zafferson.
Good evening, Mayor Doyle, and members of the city council. I too want to also express my gratitude and thank you for the long hours. I know you've received emails. I know you get calls at all times of the day and night, and it's greatly appreciated knowing that this is largely a volunteer effort. So, thank you very much. My name is William Zafferson, and I reside at One Cortland Circle with my wife, daughter, and dog, Quinn. Two weeks ago, I came before you to ask for your support to study building a sidewalk from Bayview Road to Seaside along the Ferry Road. At that time, I articulated some of the dangers that I see on that stretch of road. As you consider your next steps in potentially funding a study, I'm hopefully will take some of the feedback that you've received in consideration. Camp Ellis and the Beechers are not just a Ward 4 resource. They are one of our most impressive natural resources, and it just happens to be at the end of the Ferry Road. There's a dilemma, though, in access. This is a part of Saco that welcomes tourists and other visitors to our city, but this can also put those visitors and our own citizens at risk as they look to access those natural resources. Personally, I've had cars brush by me within inches, as have my wife and my daughter. Last year, and I know you've already heard this, a truck tragically ran over a dog that was being walked by its owner, and it was on a leash. There's also been several auto accidents in the vicinity. Given the rental market in the Camp Ellis and surrounding area, there are a number of motorists that are coming in from out of the area who are not aware of the requirement to maintain a safe distance, nor are they familiar with the road itself, especially think of that sharp bend right by the end of Ferry, Ferry Road on Ferry Lane. I also surmise that there are probably a lot of other incidences where people do not report came too close. As I have talked with other residents, I've heard stories of walkers, joggers, and bicyclists who walk or ride the loop but find this area particularly concerning. Just this past weekend, there was a ride for Parkinson's disease that ran through this very section, evidence that this is not just a local draw for the residents who live there, but it attracts riders from all over. Now, here's the difficult part. I can attest that there's no shortage of projects in our city, and as a taxpayer, I'm mindful that there are only limited resources. But I also want to implore you that if there are funds available to begin to understand what this particular project will take, to understand where the lot lines and the easements exist, where the willingness of homeowners and landowners will be to cooperate, what design elements must be considered, and what options exist to do something versus nothing. I think there is no better time than now to act. Only once we know the facts and the data can then we begin to solution this as a community, inclusive of establishing priority, establishing support, determining the best ways to construct, and understanding all of the funding resources and available sources of funds. We need to start somewhere. I'm here tonight to instill a sense of urgency to all of you as each day goes by, and we run the risk of another headline focused on another accident, a dog being injured or killed, a young bicyclist riding with his parents being hit. This is publicity that I'd like to see us avoid. And I couldn't leave you without at least calling attention to my last comment last week, or two weeks ago, where the seven-foot-tall reflective yellow road sign that sits near the end of Ferry Road that says motorists share the road, that has a graphic of a pedestrian and a bicyclist on it, has been hit. That sign has been hit and still faces the road, the woods, excuse me. That sign is stationary, bright yellow, and prominent. Compare that to a child on a bicycle or a couple walking out for exercise. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Up next is Dan Ross.
My name is Dan Ross. I live at 54 Ferry Lane. Some of you know me as the president of Saco Bay Trails, but I'm not here in that capacity today. I came with my wife to join, to put my two cents in, to highlight the terrible safety issues over on Ferry Road. Ordinarily, as head of Saco Bay Trails, I would be encouraging people to get out and walk as much as they can. Unfortunately, I can't in good conscience recommend that people walk to Camp Ellis. As you, particularly in the warm weather and in the summertime, the road is lined with walkers, runners, bikers, and it's a very busy road. There's no place on the pavement to step to the side. I've even seen mothers with children, and I was shocked one day to see a mother pushing a double stroller on the pavement. Cars drive fairly fast on there. Ferry Lane is a completely blind curve in both directions. Frankly, it's a tragic accident waiting to happen. So, I can't speak to the funding issues. I'm not well-versed in the history, but it seems to me that a study, particularly whereas, when I read the packet, the funds seemed to be available, I think it would be a big mistake not to go forward with the study, and I urge you, you'll never know what accidents you prevent by doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last of those that have signed up for Public Comment. If there's anybody else who would like to speak, please come forward and be heard. Okay, moving on. Item 7, Approval of the Minutes for September 7, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Removed.
Councilor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman. Any discussion on the minutes? Roll call vote on the minutes. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes 6-1. There are no consent items this evening. Moves us on to Item 9, Action Items. First reading, Item A. Budget Amendment Number 3, Ferry Road Sidewalk Extension, Page 2 in your packet. Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council has requested an engineering design study to extend Ferry Road sidewalks. Finance identified that council has approved $150,000 out of the Industrial Park Road TIF for fiscal year 2022. Therefore, funds are available. This amendment moves $100,000 from the Route 112 Traffic Improvements Project in the General Fund to the new Ferry Road sidewalk project. It ordered that city council approves the first reading of Budget Amendment Number 3, fiscal year 2022, and moves to schedule a second and final reading for September 20, 2021. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Councilor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion? Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've heard from many of my neighbors about the safety issues down in that section of the road, but I'd point out that this isn't only a safety issue. It's also about accessibility, accessibility of everyone to a unique community resource and, right, natural resource. It's also about creating livable communities where neighbors can walk to see each other and engage in communal discussions and activities in a safe manner. It's also about giving access to nature. Remember, we're friendly by nature and conservation. Allows those things, well, not, right, increasing our parking burden. And finally, it's about economic development and allowing tourists and others access to Camp Ellis, which should and does serve as an economic engine for Saco. So, I hope you'll join me in supporting this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Council Archer?
That's more of a question to our director, Matt Fox.
Director Fox?
So, while I'm initially intrigued on this study, I also want to, what I've found is when you package things, purchasing power can take into, can come into play. I'm interested, again, we've been talking about roads, sidewalks all throughout the city. I was considering even amending future additional funds to this study to be more inclusive throughout the whole city. How many projects, in your understanding, how many other sidewalk issues do we have that is related to Saco? Because if you go west of Saco Middle School, where kids actually walk, they're right there as well, and we know there's others. I'd like this to be possibly, we amend to include additional funds to actually see what these issues are, almost a needs assessment of our complete sidewalk studies. If we were to do something like that, yes, there's additional cost, but would the purchasing power of vendors or whoever we'd go out to be more favorable if we were to do something more city-wide?
I think we're talking about a few different issues at play. This is a very high-profile project, as we can see, a very high need for a sidewalk in that area. But what we were putting forward, it keeps being called a study, it was to design, to engineer and design a very specific sidewalk in a very specific location. It has nothing to do with looking at the value of it, why it should be there over other sidewalks. It's not a planning study. This was simply to take a concept that our city engineer already put together. He already put together a cost estimate. That's where we got to the $2 million. That was based on current construction values to add the drainpipe and fill in the ditches and build a sidewalk. So, this was just to take that to the level that we could put it out to bid. So, when you think of a study, you think of, you're studying, should you put your asset there? Should you put your money? That's not what this was. What we were proposing was to just design that specific sidewalk, not look at why it should be there or any of that stuff. So, it's not a study. It's to survey the ground, engineer a very specific five-foot-wide sidewalk to go there to meet a very specific need. So, what you're talking about is something different, is where else do we need sidewalks? Where are we missing them? What is the value of each, and which order should they be done in? So, two very different avenues. I get calls on a regular basis. Jenkins Road, most of North Saco that has neighborhoods being built up, people move there, and they probably move there from an assortment of rural and downtown areas, and once they get there, they realize they want to be able to walk on Flag Pond Road, McKinney Road. So, we are getting, I mean, significantly, I've had more side, new sidewalk requests in the last three years than I had in my first 13 years here combined. So, there clearly is a desire, but the question of, do you want to turn it into a study of which one comes first and which one has the greatest value to the city, that's very different than what we had put forward. We were just saying it would cost $100,000 to design a very specific, approximately $2 million sidewalk.
And that didn't take into lane acquisition?
No. In a perfect world, or in an, you know, hopefully, there would not be any land acquisition. There would be land right requests, but hopefully, so we did not include any land acquisition costs because it would be almost impossible to speculate what that would be. Now, the state that has much more stringent property acquisition, they kind of gave up on this project years ago because they were seeing that to meet their state and federal standards, there was going to be acquisition. Locally, we don't have to do that. If someone gives us a right and is willing to attach that to their deed, then we can construct the project. So, a couple of different things at play, and they're both, they're both obviously important. They're both, but I think a study or a prioritization of which, where we add sidewalks that are missing sidewalks, is different than the $100,000 to design a specific one.
Okay. So, as I understood it, it was more of a study, which I
Yeah.
I feel that's where the purchase power, when you start being a little bit more broader, where it's more of a creating a blueprint. Is that a fair?
That's, yeah. Yeah. This is creating the documents that a contractor could build it off of. Nothing to do with whether it's warranted or any of that. That's not, there's no analysis of that. It's just an engineering
And I think that's what led to the confusion, is when you say "study."
I think it's being called "study." It's just a design. It's not a study.
All right. Thank you.
Director Fox, excuse me. As we talked about before, I understand through the school construction project, the local community that's involved in the bond project can bond over what is being asked for for the specific school. So, if, let's just say, for instance, if the school was going out in the area behind the Saco Middle School, where the city owns an abundance of property, at that time, it could take out an additional bonding money to put in sidewalks to connect those neighborhoods that have kids that are walking to and from Saco Middle School, specifically on Jenkins Road, Hillview Heights, Chantel Way, and some of those other neighborhoods out there that we've seen grow over the past 10 years. So, is that still something that we can look at as we move forward?
We certainly can. I've only, I'm sitting on one of the committees for a selection site that we've had one meeting. I've heard speculation of how it works in other communities. I've heard a little broad overview from the architects involved with the school department. It sounds like once you arrive at a site and you go through the whole selection process, off-site improvements, such as extending sewer to the new school, a sidewalk, connection roads, they are all potentially partially fundable with state dollars, and then obviously the community can go above and beyond in whatever fashion they choose. So, yes, I don't don't think, I think we're a long way from knowing whether a school would go out Route 1, Route 5, Route 112 downtown. That's, that's a long way off, I think. But yes, it sounds like a combination of state or local funding could bring assets to, you know, connect existing infrastructure to a new school.
Thank you. Any further questions for Director Fox?
I guess I have a question.
Counselor Johnston?
I mean, first I just say that, you know, as I said several weeks ago, I support the funding of this design. I can see the benefits to that area down there. And I think while, you know, how we fund it will be a challenge in the future and, you know, one which we'll have to deal with then, I think the key difference, at least in my mind, between that section of the ferry road and, say, further out, you know, west of or north of the Turnpike is, that's really part of the problem we have in Saco to begin with, which is sprawl. That section of the ferry road has been developed, the vast majority of it, my entire life. And clearly, it's been a need. As I said, you know, last week, I can remember as a child riding my bike down there and having the same issues we're having presently. So there's that. But the only question I had was, what's the impact since we're diverting these funds from the Route 112 construction cycle? What's the impact? Will we just fund more in next year's cycle?
To be honest, I think that was, you know, other city staff besides Public Works trying to make sure to capture what could go back in certain funds based on different things that happened during the budget. From my department, had I seen the wording of it, I certainly would have advocated to leave the money, leave money alone for Route 112 because we just acquired a property, but that's only step one of realigning and signalizing Jenkins Road. And this would be sort of separate and come out of the general fund considering, you know, the health of our general fund. So I, I'm not sure I would link the two of taking from 112 to put there. And then maybe that could be reworded before the final reading, if that was something that, that the council was interested in. I think it was just simply that it was found that what was TIF-eligible versus general fund-eligible, and they were trying to refine that and minimize the financial impact to the general fund.
Okay. I think that addresses it. So your opinion would be that we should leave that for the use by W.
I think we all know that we're in for a lot of spending along the Route 112 corridor to make it work for our community when the new exits come for the Turnpike. So I wouldn't, I think if it was possible to leave that money alone and let the Jenkins Road improvements continue for their own design and implementation, I don't think, I don't think these two have to be tied together quite that, quite the way that's worded right now.
Thank you.
Counselor Hatch?
Pat, I just wanted to address a couple of issues with you. I'm, I, in my own mind, I really get and understand the safety issues. I understand that the benefits accrue well beyond the ward or for residents. But what I'm concerned about is the actual prioritizing of projects, just the system itself, if there is one. And listening to you tonight, clarifying the difference between a study and engineering plans, effectively, if we vote this money, we will have in hand plans specific to ferry road that would be put out to bid. And I'm not sure that's where I thought this was going. So my question to you is, it's my understanding that you, on a regularly scheduled, budgeted basis, have a paving list of streets within the city, and you, you steward that money and you have some sort of ranking system for the streets. But my understanding is we do not have one of those processes in place for sidewalks. Is that correct?
I'm certainly, I'm very proud of the system we have in place for existing infrastructure and deciding what project comes next for what we replace for what we already have. I will say, we, we fall short as a community probably of equaling that with deciding where our new assets go. And that really shouldn't be something that's decided at the Public Works Department level. So we have focused, I mean, 10 years ago, we didn't have any money to spend on capital planning, so it really didn't matter. We've, we've built that up. The community has been dedicated to improving our infrastructure. So now that we've got that system in place, I do think there is room for some exercises amongst the council and staff and, you know, some of the updated planning documents, like the comprehensive plan, and really trying to tie those together. I mean, I, we've worked a lot, I've worked a lot with my staff on asset management of what we have. But I can't map out what the most important improvements are moving forward. But what I can do is, you know, commit to providing, if we can come up with a forum to do it in that, that seems like it'll work, is a list of 10 million, 10 projects worth $10 million, and you can decide what the priority is of them. I mean, I think that's, now, could these happen concurrently? Absolutely. I mean, the ferry, designing a ferry road sidewalk, it's clearly a desire of a lot of people in this community. And we can design that. It's not going to really go, it's not going to go stale. You know, construction funding is another, that's not an easy thing to tackle with what that's going to cost. That's more than we spend on our, all our existing assets every year. So funding mechanism, whether it's bond or whatnot, is a separate issue. But you could concurrently, if you chose to, have this design move forward. But I still think we do need to move forward with what, where does the construction of this lie in regard to Route 112, the pedestrian bridge to Bedford, sidewalk connections in other areas of the community? I mean, take your pick. There's a lot of stuff out there for infrastructure need floating out there now. I think that's, I think they're two separate exercises that are getting blended together a little bit.
I would agree with you, and I appreciate that clarification. So I guess I'm, I'm sort of in a position of thinking about this more holistically and hopeful that we can come to some conclusion here that not only takes into consideration the very clear needs of the ferry road project, but also have a system in place that can help you help us identify and us find funding for future improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Berman?
Thank you. Director Fox, the ferry road is a state road also. Is that correct?
Yes.
And might there be some state funding available to help with an eventual sidewalk project?
There could be some. Where we'll, there certainly will be some that we can advocate for. Some of the dollar thresholds for some of the programs we might be eligible for come down to the fact that ferry road really doesn't meet a lot of federal design standards. The last time ferry road got paved, we chose to do it completely locally because the state at the time, the state was not fitting it in, it doesn't fit in their boxes nicely because it doesn't have the width of most state roads. It doesn't have, and they're really not rebuilding or reconstructing state roads. So they're rehabilitating them. But if we lead the project and probably get 50% match from a state program, it might not be next year. It might be, I mean, we might have to wait, wait our turn, but can probably get 50% only up to a certain threshold. They'll, that might be $300,000 to $500,000 of state money. That would be the easiest avenue I can see of existing programs, not to say that there aren't others that might be eligible for, but.
And do I recall correctly that it's easier to seek that money if we have what's called a shovel-ready project, or if we have those designs in hand?
It never hurts. Yes, I would say it's not harder. So it's easier. To what degree they help varies per program, but typically having a final number and being ready to go with a project helps.
And, and did I also kind of hear you say that going forward with the design of this project, and, you know, the words on our packet, our engineering design study, which I think is where some of the confusion comes from, but we'll just call the engineering, these plans, it wouldn't interfere with a second request or another effort to do this second kind of study where we examine holistically the needs of the city and other sidewalks or other infrastructure needs? It's not an either-or proposition, but there's the bandwidth to do both?
Yeah, bandwidth in that, for the most part, the design money that we're talking about, because it is $100,000, that allows my staff to send that out to a consultant that we have on, on retainers.
But through a, through a separate process with, with separate funding, your department has the personnel and ability to do this more holistic review of our.
Yeah, I think some of that could just start at the staff level so we're not, and then if we want to push it a step further to expend more consultant funds, that would be a separate request. Yeah.
Thank you.
Counsel Archer?
Yes. Rather than us loaning, or again, borrowing from one account to then replenish it, I'd like to make an amendment to take the $100,000 out of the general fund and leave, re-put that $100,000 back into the Route 112 traffic improvement.
Counsel Archer has made an amendment to take the $100,000 out of the undesignated fund balance and not out of the Route 112 traffic improvement for fiscal year 2022. Is that right, Counsel Archer?
That's correct.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion on the amendment? On the amendment only? Roll call vote on the amendment. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Amendment passes seven zero. Back to the main motion. Counselor Hatch?
Pat, I have one more question I forgot to ask you. Along the lines of Counselor Archer's interest in other projects, would it be reasonable to expect that maybe within the next quarter of the year, before the end of the year, that you might be, you and your staff may be able to come up with what you would consider your list of eight to 10 projects or so within the city sidewalk projects, so at least the council can have some sense of where other need is? Is that a reasonable?
Yeah. I think if you can play along with it being a little rudimentary, but I could give you 10 projects of just gaps in our sidewalk network. Not all sidewalks are created equal, just because the ferry road one, which is a built-out area and a harder, more expensive place to build a sidewalk, there will be some that you'll find, you're not going to see like every foot costs the same a dollar. But we'll, you know, we can include some design assumptions we've made to say, this includes curb or drainage, and that's why it adds this much. Or, so I could, yeah, I mean, rough targets of, and I can refine this with some of the other departments that would, that would help out with this or my own staff. But I mean, a goal of 10 projects worth $10 million to kind of get a sense of what else is floating out there and coming into our department for requests.
I think that would be helpful.
As a first step, I could do something like that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote on the main motion as amended. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to item B, a first reading, chapter 81, Conveyance of City Property, 509 Buxton Road, page four in your packet. Counselor Purdy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City-owned property at the corner of Buxton and Grant Roads is proposed to be sold. The property was foreclosed on by the city for the non-payment of taxes in January 2018. The Finance Department reports several attempts to communicate with the owner, a rustle holler with no response. The current assessment for the 16-acre parcel values the land at $153,800 and a building on the site at $39,500. The parcel has not been inspected for development potential. This item was reviewed by the Planning Board at its April 20 meeting. The Board recommended that the Department of Public Works be consulted as to the advisability of retaining additional right-of-way along both Grant and Buxton Roads, and that the remainder of the parcel be considered for sale by the city. The council discussed this item under New Business during the June 7 meeting and requested input from the Conservation Commission, who also recommends the city to move forward with selling the property. I move to approve the first reading and to schedule a public hearing for October 4, 2021.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that I walked the property along with the Conservation Commission on several occasions. And, well, there are some trails there that were apparently at one time used by a local, now-defunct snowmobile club. There are wetlands and woods and other kind of items of potential interest. There is also an incredible amount of refuse. There are empty barrels. There are cars. There are mattresses. There are furniture. There are just a huge number of items that propose, that might pose both environmental and personal risk that really just diminished any kind of conservation value or, in our imagination, any potential use by the city. We had other conservation groups weigh in, and they felt the same. And therefore, we really came to the conclusion that a sale was the best use of that property to somebody who would clean it up and maybe make better use of it. And that's how we came to a recommendation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to item C, one reading, updates to the fiscal year 2022 fee schedule, page six in your packet. Counselor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On August 23, City Council approved the updated sewer ordinance, which slightly revises the formulae used to calculate the impact fees. The existing equivalent dwelling unit, EDU, rate will remain effective, but as of September 23, the WRRD is moving to a per-gallon rate of $31.23 instead of a two-part calculation of the impact fee. Moving forward, the city will be referring to this fee as the WRRD impact fee, as it includes the CSO impact fee and the sewer connection charge. Finance has also reviewed the sewer ordinance referendum, references in the following table to reflect the revised sewer ordinance that will be effective September 23, 2021. Additionally, the main state legislator has updated the fees that municipalities may charge for FOAA requests. Amendments to MRSA 408A set the, set the black-and-white copy fee per page at no more than 10 cents per page and the staff time charge at $25 per hour with the first two hours free. Be it ordered that the City Council adopt the amendment to the fiscal year 2022 fee schedule as prescribed by chapter 176 of the city ordinance and recently amended MRSA section 408-a. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just really a clarification question. In the background, in that last paragraph, it says that the black-and-white copy fee per page must be no more than 10 cents per page. But on packet page seven, in the new fee, it still lists the black-and-white copy cost as 50 cents per page. I'm wondering if that, should that be 10 cents per page? Packet page seven, I guess? Action item C, very first item.
So I think what you're looking at there, Counselor Berman, is that's, that's regular copy cost. If you look under the, the next item down is Freedom of Information. Freedom of Information or Freedom of Access Act is the FOAA. And if you look next to that under the current fee, you'll see the strike-through language. And then over to the right, you'll see in the last column, the new fee.
Which also listed at 50 cents per page.
Color cost is a dollar per page, $10 for USBs.
Right before that.
Yeah.
The B slash W copy cost is 50 cents per page, color cost is a dollar per page.
So I, I don't know why that's there, and I can't tell you. Maybe, I don't see.
It should say 10 cents. Then I move to amend that 50 cents per page to 10 cents per page.
Second.
Amendment's been made by Counselor Berman, second by Counselor Johnston, to amend the document, the fee document. the document, the fee document on page seven, under Freedom of Information, to 10 cents from 50 cents. Any discussion on the amendment only? Roll call vote on the amendment only. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Amendment passes 7-0. Back to the main motion as amended. Any further discussion on updating the fee schedule? Roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us item 10 of the agenda, which is new business. Item A is city street acceptance request from Lombard Lane, page 28 in your packet, and it's been assigned to Counselor Gunn. Counselor Gunn, are you willing to stay on as the council liaison for this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Planner Garnum, thank you also for joining us. Is there anything else that we need to know rather than what's been put into the item commentary?
Nope. This is a pretty clean one, but I know it is some counselors' maybe first time through a formal road acceptance. So, my, my usual take is that the developer did everything that, while everyone knows I don't like getting new roads and the same number of people to plow them, the fact is that this, this developer did everything that was asked of him by what was written in the ordinances at the time. So, while we do make sure before it reaches you, everything is done down to the deeds with Tim Murphy and Joe Laverrier has gone over these with Tom Duros, our construction inspector, over and over and over to make sure they do every last thing related to the infrastructure, by the time they get to you, they are a bit of a formality, and we recommend acceptance because the developer is played by the rules that we set forth at the time. So, those rules have been met in this case. This is a dead-end street off of Ross Road, does have some ability for future connectivity for a later phase or something, but has all the turnarounds we need, the lighting, the sidewalk, the sidewalks.
Director Fox, I'm very familiar with this project because it was when I was a counselor that this, this project, Lombard Lane, Lombard Estates, actually caused the blasting ordinance, and that was the whole reason why the blasting ordinance came about. And one of the things I'm concerned about is knowing that, that area in the cul-de-sac, at the end of it, is there enough room to turn around for a fire truck, or is there enough room to turn around for any plowing equipment that will have to get down there as part of accepting the road?
Yeah, that one has a hammerhead turnaround, so that one, it extends past the last lot straight ahead, and then also has a 40-foot, 40-foot stretch to the left. So it almost looks like a driveway. The only thing a little different is we've, we've restricted driveway accessibility off of those turnarounds a little bit more, probably since that design was accepted, but it, it's fine, it meets our standards for all emergency vehicles.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Fox or Planner Garnum? Counsel Archer?
Yes, I don't think it applies to this property, but based on, you said it, isn't there, I'm just trying to help my memory of street acceptances, is that, has to be like 80% built or something of that nature? Is that accurate? I'm just trying to remember what the, that one.
Yeah, I think we finally, so that was.
We had issues with other projects.
That wasn't written as many places as we thought it was, it wasn't the standards. We used to, before we would allow a developer to put surface pavement down, we wanted 80% of the house lots built out so that you weren't doing all of that house lot construction on a brand-new finished road. So, this one did wait till well after 80% for the final pavement to go down, but that has also been corrected in some of the ordinance updates that were done on the tail end of the comprehensive plan and the subdivision regulations, and also our, our construction design manual that we pulled out and we have as a separate document. And since the time that it did sort of come to a head with one developer because they, they weren't aware, we've added it to a special note for a pre-construction meeting. So when projects get started, it's, it's laid right out there that that is going to be done before they put the surface pavement.
And 80% is the number, correct?
I.
Give or take?
It's either 70 or 80%.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Any questions? Counsel, you'll be seeing this come forward at one of our future meetings. Thank you very much. With that, that brings us to item 10B, and that's Philip Springs Covenants. It's on page 35 in your packet. It is also assigned to Counselor Gunn. Counselor Gunn, are you willing to stay on as the council liaison?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I think we're going to hear from. I think we're going to hear from Director Clavett and Economic Development Specialist Burner.
Good evening. Wanted to just update you, these covenants were reviewed by the Economic Development Commission this afternoon at 4:00, and they have unanimously moved to recommend to the City Council to adopt the Philip Springs Covenants as presented. Just by way of background, Jessa and I worked with Tim Murphy, and pretty much, he created this document based upon the existing covenants in the other parks. And so this would involve lots one and two, and. Is there anything else, Jessa, you wanted to add pretty much, or? I think that pretty much covers it. So, and the only other thing I'd like to add is obviously when we go out to RFP, that these would need to be adopted before purchase and sale can get entertained.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Counselor Johnston?
Not so much a question. As you just mentioned, it says we're doing an RFP process, but as I pointed out the night that this vote was taken, council never decided a method of sale. So, at some point, it would be my opinion that needs to come back to council for the approval of the RFP. I would just also add that at that site selection for schools that we had last week, we actually discussed the Sweets or area, and that was viewed as a very highly desirable location. So as I had previously said on these lots, the city currently owns them, and it's viewed by the superintendent that that area, maybe not these particular lots, but that area is highly desirable. So, as far as the covenants, they read very similar to our other covenants, and I'll just simply say that what's the intent, or what's the purpose of covenants if we're not going to actually follow them? And prior councils have had a history of basically just pushing them aside. So if we're going to put covenants in place, I would hope that future councils actually follow them. Otherwise, why do them at all? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, counsel, you'll see this at a future agenda for your consideration. With that, that brings us through new business, and that brings us to item 11, the administrative updates. City Administrator Kainrath.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple bid opportunities to announce. First, for the wastewater recovery division department, the city of Saco is soliciting bids for two 4-inch Fairbanks Morse or similar submersible pumps to replace existing pumps at the Bayview Pump Station. Bids must be submitted on the bid response form in a sealed envelope marked 4-inch submersible pump. Bids will be accepted until 1:00 p.m. on Tuesday, October 19, 2021, at the finance office at Saco City Hall located at 300 Main Street, Saco, Maine, over 072, and there will be a public opening of all bids received at that time. Any questions may be directed to Deputy Director Stacy Thompson at the Water Resource Recovery Department. IT also has a bid opportunity being put out to the public, soliciting proposals for a Cisco switching, Cisco switching equipment. Proposals must be submitted on the bid response form in a sealed envelope or earmarked or emailed marked IT Infrastructure Bid. Proposals will be accepted on this one until October 24, October 14, 2021, at 1:00 p.m. at the finance office at Saco City Hall. Any questions here may be directed to Ryan Pena or IT Director. Lastly, a five-year general lease, fund a lease. The city is accepting proposals for the fiscal year 2022 of a five-year bundled capital financing as approved by the city council. The total financing amount is $610,788.68 with a down payment not to exceed $153,594 and a lease term of five years. Proposals are due to Glenn Solis, Finance Director, by email no later than September 27 at 5:00 p.m. For more information, please contact our Finance Director or visit our website at saco main.org. An update, Jenkins Road, Route 112, which came up earlier, but just to announce that our acquisition of the property at Two Hillview Avenue is scheduled to close on September 15. That's this week, and that is all on track. Lastly, I just want to announce, we've been working with Age Friendly Saco to onboard an AmeriCorps volunteer who will be managing a transportation program for our seniors, offering ride assistance. He'll be utilizing a Saco Parks and Rec Department van to offer weekday rides as needed and potentially one weekend day. The details are still being worked out, but we anticipate this program beginning sometime in October. This has been a great effort between Age Friendly and the city, and we look forward to obviously providing more transportation options for our senior population, some of which may have limited transportation methods. So, more information will be forthcoming in the coming weeks, but thank you to everyone involved here. This is going to be a great, a great program. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Kainrath, any questions for the city administrator? No questions. Moving on to item 12, council discussion and comment? Council discussion and comment tonight? Counselor Hatch?
I just have two issues. We heard earlier about masking in our public buildings. Has any, maybe I can address this to Brian. First of all, is, who is our COVID-19 officer? Is the Dick Lambert reference accurate, or has that been changed?
Our, our public health officer is our code enforcement director, so that is now Dave Toomey, and he is the, the public health officer.
Okay.
However, on COVID issues, we have largely relied on our EMA director, who is John Duros.
Okay.
In talking about current COVID safety protocols, and so it's, it's a combination of Chief Duros, Director Toomey, myself, and there is a group that monitors these things and monitors the latest CDC guidance, who is in charge of making these recommendations.
So have we had any current discussion, and is the current non-masking or volunteer masking the decision that was made?
So we, you know, from the beginning of this entire thing, have followed recommended guidance from, from CDC. So the current recommended guidance is a recommendation for masks, which we have put out to staff that masks are recommended. It's not a mandate, there's a difference there, but that is the latest CDC guidance. Different municipalities are going in different ways. I know the city of Portland is going to be discussing, I think, this week on whether they should be instituting a mask mandate. Some surrounding communities have, some haven't. It's kind of a hodgepodge, and as you know, it's been kind of up and down as the numbers seem to, to fluctuate. It is something we keep a close eye on. It is something we are, we're obviously, you know, monitoring closely, and I think if, if things get more serious, or maybe, you know, we, we take a step further now, it would, I think, move to a mandate. But just to be consistent, and I think in discussing with Chief Duros, we have accepted all recommended guidelines from the CDC, and I know there are differing opinions here, but the current recommended guidance is a mask recommendation, not a, not a mandate. But obviously, that, that could change at any time. So that's, that's where we are currently, just.
Thank, thank you for that. And secondly, I, I had made some comments about environmental study on the Hillview Heights purchase. Was, was that conducted? Was that not conducted? What was the final resolution?
So in, we, we did not conduct that study in consultation with, with legal. It's not something that usually happens on a residential home purchase. It certainly could have been an extra step, but with, with what we had and the information that we were presented, it wasn't really deemed to be a necessary step. Now, we, we could still do that if we wanted to dig into the property further and just know what we have, but with the purposes that we're potentially using it for, I'm not sure if it's.
I appreciate that.
No warranty, but, but your comments were heard loud and clear, and we could still take that step if there's desire to do it.
Well, it's usually a pre-closing step, so I.
Yeah, also, the timeline was the other issue. The owners wanted to close this week because they were lining up other housing, and if we threw in additional studies and assessments, it would have delayed that, that period, and they were, I'll say, for obvious and, and good reasons, set on trying to close this week at an earlier date. So, that was the other piece of it.
Thank you.
Moving on from council discussion and comment, there's no executive session tonight. Brings us to item 15, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Purdy. Any discussion? Roll call vote to adjourn. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes to adjourn 7-0 at 7:35 p.m. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.